Greetings. My name is Tina Cersted, and I'm proud to be a part of the League of Women Voters Dakota County. Welcome to the Rosemont City Council Candidate Forum. It is my honor to present our moderator, Lynn Lewis. Lynn is a trained moderator and a valuable member of our league, serving as a co-president and a co-chair of the Voter Service Committee. Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you, Tina. Good evening, and on behalf of the League of Women Voters Dakota County and the Dakota County Regional Chamber of Commerce, welcome to the Rosemont City Council Candidate Forum. Thank you to the candidates for attending tonight. Would also like to thank Rosemont Community TV for their willingness to record and broadcast this event, and the City of Rosemont for allowing us to use their facilities. The Dakota County Regional Chamber of Commerce is a 66-year-old chamber organization that serves nine cities, including Rosemont, and three townships while representing 50% of Dakota County residents. The DCR prides itself in driving business and communities forward. They are the voices of business and work to develop vibrant communities through programming like this candidate forum. The DCR is grateful for the partnership with the League of Women Voters Dakota County for this event. The League of Women Voters is a 114-year-old organization that strives to empower voters through education, engagement, and civic participation. The League does not support or oppose a political party or a candidate for office. League of Women Voters Dakota County provides unbiased candidate and issue information that's used by Minnesota voters regardless of their political beliefs. Sponsorship of this forum is a public service providing you with an opportunity to hear the candidates discuss important issues face-to-face. The views expressed here are those of the candidates and not those of the League of Women Voters Dakota County or the Dakota County Regional Chamber of Commerce. Sponsorship of this forum is not an endorsement by the League or Chamber of any particular candidate. League of Women Voters Minnesota and local leagues post complete, unedited recordings of forums. Editing is authorized only for official media reporting. Excerpts or edited clips of candidate forums may not be used for partisan or political purposes. League of Women Voters posts only complete, unedited recordings of our forums. We'll start the candidate forum with opening statements. Each candidate will have two minutes for their opening statements and two minutes for their closing statements. Opening statements will be in alphabetical order; closing statements will be in reverse alphabetical order. The order of answering questions will be randomly determined. Questions will hurt—candidates will have 90 seconds to respond to the questions, and we ask the candidates to respect these time limits. Please note our timekeeper, who has a yellow 15-second sign, alerting you that you have 15 seconds to complete your response. There's also a stop sign that indicates you should conclude your sentence so we can move on to the next candidate. Many of the questions for this evening were submitted to the League and/or Chamber by email. They were reviewed by a committee of League members and edited for clarity. In addition, the committee developed some questions based on topics of interest they identified in the community. Because of time constraints, we're not able to ask all of the questions submitted. The forum will conclude in about an hour. So let's begin with our opening statements. The order for opening statements will be Heidi Freske, followed by Paul Tyson, and then Al Vial. Heidi?
Thank you to the League of Women Voters of Dakota County and Dakota County Chamber of Commerce for hosting today's forum. I am Heidi Freske. I am currently serving my second term on city council. I started this journey eight years ago when my boys were four, five, and 15. At that time, I wanted the council to have a voice for young families. Fast forward eight years, and we have accomplished more than I could have ever imagined. Rosemont is one of the fastest-growing communities in the Twin Cities, and it's the place where people want to live. We are making continuous investments in public safety. Fortune 500 companies are investing in our community. New schools are being built to support our growing population, and we are experiencing record economic development growth. These accomplishments are a result of diligent planning, a strong leadership team at the city, and a council who is proactive and focused on providing our residents a high quality of living while wisely spending their tax dollars. Throughout the past eight years, I've had the privilege of being the community liaison to the Leprechaun Days and Haunted Trail Committees. I learned very quickly, our community is not about City Hall. It's about the residents who make up our neighborhoods, old and new. Our Rosemont brand is hometown feel, and preserving that is always the number-one goal. In my full-time job, I am a vice president at a financial institution locally, and I'm responsible for executing the strategic direction of the digital consumer segment. I am running for a third term because our community is in the midst of tremendous growth. It is critical this is done in a smart, strategic way. My experience as a council member, professional, and leader will continue to be an asset to the city council. Thank you.
Paul?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Paul Tyson, and I'm proud to be here tonight as a candidate for election for Rosemont City Council. My story begins on a small farm in central Minnesota where I learned the value of hard work, integrity, and community. These values have guided me throughout my whole life. From those humble beginnings I worked my way through college, driven by a desire to make a difference. That determination led me to a successful career in leadership and management at my current company, Genentech, which is a biotech company in South San Francisco. There, I've honed my skills in strategic planning, collaboration, and innovation—skills that I've brought with me to our city council. Family is at the heart of everything that I do. My wife Jessica of 24 years and I are blessed with two children. Carter, who's a sophomore at St. John's University, excelling in a business management degree and also playing baseball. And then my daughter, who—I actually just came from the soccer game—has now joined soccer as well, but she's a senior at RHS and very involved with basketball, lacrosse, and will be playing lacrosse at St. Ben's College next year. But it's this sense of community in Rosemont that I believe is truly second to none, and it's the community spirit that motivates me to help serve and do more. So for the past two years, I've had the honor of serving this community on city council and the Port Authority, working alongside dedicated colleagues and city staff to help shape the future of Rosemont. We've made great strides, and I'm proud of a lot of the things we've accomplished, but there's still more to be done. As you heard from Heidi, there's a lot of development, a lot of things that are coming. So I'm running for election because I believe that the potential of this city and its people is very high. Together, we can continue to build a vibrant, connected, and prosperous Rosemont. So thank you for your trust and support, and I look forward to the opportunity to continue to serve you.
Al?
Thank you. I'm Al Vial. I'm a 16-year resident of Rosemont. I have a 17-year-old daughter, Aaliyah, that I co-parent, that will be a senior this year at RHS, who wants to go on to study data science and artificial intelligence. We have a dachshund and two orange tabbies. I'm a technical alliance consultant at Oracle in its Oracle Cloud Infrastructure business, as well as owning two small businesses of my own that do IT consulting and media marketing. I was a part of RAAA for several years, even being a track announcer for four years, and I currently sit on the Board of Directors for Rosemont Arts—Rosemont Area Arts Council as its technology chair. I'm built for this job. I'm third generation in my family devoting our time and skills to public service and public office. My father ran for city council of the city of now-then and was also chairman of the Roads and Bridges Commission. My grandmother Irene was the first woman mayor of Hampton and received accolades from Hubert Humphrey for all her work in helping that city get on a progressive path to improvement. And she still had time to get us all together for Sunday meals. My top priorities are public safety, responsible planning, supporting small business, fiscal responsibility and transparency to the public. Running a city is hard, but I believe that my continued devotion to service, ability to handle multiple complex streams of activity, decision-making skills, and my analytical approach to projects, and my ability to work within a team makes me your best choice for a Rosemont City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. Now we'll move on to questions. The response order for the first question will be Paul Tyson, Al Vial, and Heidi Freske. Okay, and our first question is, what is your favorite place or places to spend time in Rosemont, and why?
Oh. Well, this one—this one's easy. I love this one. So I would have to say that my favorite place to spend time in Rosemont is definitely the parks, whether it's playing football and coaching football like I did for many years with RAAA at Shannon Park on those fields right there, to Carols Woods where I take my fat tire bike or just run through time and time again. But the trails in the parks are definitely where I find myself spending the most time just because I think Rosemont has done a great job of expanding and—not only that, but putting a lot of time and effort into their parks—but then also the value of the connection and the community coming together. So, I mean, Saturday mornings at Shannon Park is nothing but loud, noisy, and as fun as possible because you really truly see all these different generations of grandparents, parents, and everybody coming together to play football. It's exciting. It's something I actually miss as my kids have gotten older, so I find myself biking or running strategically in that area right during that time of the morning. So my favorite—you know, just to answer the question to come back to it—it's definitely the park system and all the different things that we're doing to keep this city exciting in the parks.
Al?
I'd have to say the parks as well. You know, we have done—in this city—and the city has done a great job in facilitating the fact that we have 14 wonderful parks in order to choose from. And Shannon Park, as Paul had said—I love Whitetail Woods as well. So seeing the sun come up early in the morning over the trees at several of these parks, whether it's biking—or I especially enjoy hiking. So again, I have to come back to the question and say it's the parks. We have a phenomenal park system in this city.
And Heidi?
Well, I have three things that I want to mention. So the first thing that came to mind is I graduated from Rosemont High School way back when, and so I always have a natural draw to the high school campus, specifically the Irish Stadium. Whenever you're driving down Highway 3, it's that—how it's built into kind of the hill there that always draws me, and I always love going there. I'll echo what they have said. The trails are something that I cherish out of my neighborhood, crossing into a couple of different neighborhoods. That's where my husband and I get to kind of spend some one-on-one time these days. And then the third—I'll just say downtown as a whole—that's where I tend to meet my family and friends for dinner or for some nightly entertainment and just to kind of catch up. So I can't just say one. It's all three.
Thank you. And now the response order for our next question will be Al Vial, followed by Heidi Freske, and then Paul Tyson. Our next question is, what is your position on growth and the pace of growth in the city of Rosemont? Al?
Yeah, that's a—that's a great question. So my—my position on that is, you know, small towns, progress is progress. And, you know, as a town that—you know, a city that is as popular as Rosemont is becoming, progress is bound—to happen. You know, the growth that we currently have and the pace of growth that I feel are relevant for what is required in terms of housing, infrastructure, everything else that we need from a growth standpoint, and that—you know, one of the things is—is that we see an explosion in growth within Rosemont today. What we have to keep our eye on, as we've talked about, is the hometown feel for Rosemont. Lot of my constituents that I talk to, many of them feel like we're growing a little too fast. Sometimes I agree with that, sometimes I do not. There—you know, we have to—we have to balance out the need for growth in order to balance that out with the—the ability to maintain the gems that are a part of our town and continue to foster that hometown feel that we have as a city.
Heidi?
Um, the growth that we're experiencing is a result of lots and lots of planning over many, many years and even decades. I really understand how some residents can feel overwhelmed. There's a lot of dirt moving in Rosemont, especially on the east side of—the east side of town. But with that, our housing growth is due to demand, and we've been fortunate enough to have some land developed over in the Umore Parcel, which has resulted in several units. And—and the good thing about that is we're—we're seeing a more diversity of housing: high-density, medium-density, and single-family homes, which is very much needed when you look at the data. Commercial growth is—is happening. It's coming right along, and they're very much tied. Commercial growth doesn't happen unless you have housing, and so now we're experiencing that growth in commercial. New restaurant, we've got some new daycares, a gas station will be opening up, a bakery, a bank—I could go on and on. I feel like every city council meeting, we're approving a new plat of something that's coming to Rosemont. That's part to our housing growth, and frankly, the new schools that are being built. So while I understand some may feel like it's too fast, we've planned for this. I think it's just a little overwhelming that it's happening at the same time. If you look at our strategic plan, right under growth, we have two things: continuing our community connections and preserving our hometown feel. So we—we make sure that we're doing all three at the same time.
Paul?
Yeah, I—I love this question because I think the—the growth is—is—is great, but I think there's a lot of people—to Heidi's point—that don't realize that this has been a plan for quite a while. There's been a lot of land on the east side that hasn't been developed. So Rosemont's growth is a clear indication, though, that our community is thriving and attracting new residents, which I—I find to be very exciting. I believe that in order to sustain this growth and maintain the quality of life that we all value as that hometown feel, it's essential that we encourage businesses and commercial development alongside with the housing expansion because businesses truly are the lifeblood of any community. You know, they provide jobs, services, a stronger tax base, all the different things that we're looking for on city council here. And that all supports that public infrastructure of schools and the vital services that we provide. And as Rosemont continues to grow, it's important that our local economy grows with it. So ensuring that our residents have access to employment opportunities like local shopping. And a lot of this building kind of has to come first, and then the commercial piece of it really does come second. If you look at the numbers and the more that I've learned in the last two years being on city council, I've really kind of had that in-depth education. So I think—I truly believe that we should focus on, you know, several areas, and I think it goes right back to what our strategic goals are, is really creating a business-friendly environment, supporting small businesses that are already here, and then third, attracting strategic investments to make sure that we can pay for all the infrastructure of this new development and growth.
Thank you. The response order for our next question will be Heidi Freske—
Okay.
—followed by Paul Tyson and Al Vial. And our next question is, how would you describe your leadership style? Can you tell us about a time you demonstrated leadership skills? Heidi?
Yep. So two things that come to mind—I think first and foremost as a leader and what I've done as—in city council is, you listen. You need to listen to your residents. I often meet with them for coffee, exchange emails. You listen, you learn their perspective, you learn their side of story, and that helps you make educated decisions. The second thing is, when you're in a leadership role, you have to build a strong team because your team—you're only as good as your people. And so I think that's one of the things that we've done here in the past eight years. We have an amazing leadership—leadership team at city council that has really allowed us to grow at the extent that what we're growing and attracting the companies that want to come to Rosemont. So you've got to enable your people to do their job and give them the—the breadth and the freedom to get things done once they understand your vision. And I think we've done that—we've done a really good job of that in—on the council in the past few years.
Paul?
Yeah, so, you know, within the last two years of Rosemont City Council, I deeply believe in the principles of servant leadership. And so for me, that means prioritizing the needs and well-being of others above all else. So my leadership style, to answer this question, is rooted in listening, empathy, and genuine desire to understand, and then validate the opinions and concerns of those I serve—or the—those that the council serves. And I think that's important to kind of spell that out, that this is a council that we work together to really listen and do those things. You know, so that's kind of our leadership style, and that's kind of the culture that has been built here, and it's been very successful. So leading with that positivity is also a central piece of how I approach my role. I believe that a positive outlook not only fosters collaboration and trust, but also empowers others to contribute, to be their best, and to have the best ideas and efforts come forward. So whether it's in council meetings, community events, or one-on-one conversations with residents on Night 18 that we just had last Tuesday—or two Tuesdays ago, I strive to create an environment where everyone feels respected, heard, and valued. I understand the effect of leadership is not only imposing my will, but also about facilitating dialogue, encouraging participation, and then thirdly, building that consensus as a group. And I think the staff here at Rosemont, as well as the city council, does an immaculate job of that, or exceptional job of that. So it's about making these decisions reflect the collective good, even though those decisions can be difficult at times.
Al?
Yeah, thank you. I don't have the experience of already having a team being a part of the city council, but when I look at this from what I do as a daily job, my leadership style is identifying the resources—there's a task, there's something that needs to be done. Identifying the correct operative people that will be a part of that team—you are the leader—but the—my leadership style is—is identifying the correct resources that are needed on that team to get that done and get it done quickly, but then taking the feedback from the team as well. You know, of—being part of that team and everybody collaborating together and building that dialogue with the people that are a part of that team, and my—and being that leader is to help provide the vision for what needs to be done, and also allowing those folks that are a part of your team to have that responsibility and the independence in order to do what needs to be done and in order to get that task done. And that's something that I do on—a on a regular basis in what I do today.
Thank you. The response order for our next question will be Paul Tyson, followed by Al Vial, and then Heidi Freske. So our next question is, Rosemont is a community with lots of housing and not much commercial space. Many residents want more places to shop, dine out, et cetera. What should the city do of anything to encourage businesses to move to Rosemont? Paul?
Yeah, so, you know, one of the things that I've learned on council in the last two years is that, you know, we've had a lot of people come and present to us, and one of the things that I continuously heard was that there's not the numbers to support whatever might be a hotel. There's not the numbers or the demand to support this type of restaurant. There's not the numbers to demand. So it's kind of this—what I mentioned earlier, it's kind of this, you know, teeter-totter. What do you have to do first in order to bring the other? And so what I've learned in that process is that it's very important to make sure that, you know, if you build it, they will come. And what I'm proud to say is that, to answer this question right now, there's a lot of things coming this way. I mean, we've seen the development nowadays. We see amber fields, we see the development, and we see the apartments going up. That high-density apartment, even though there might be some objection to some of that, is really bringing in people to our staff that are literally excited about bringing these new restaurants that everybody's looking for. It's bringing that—the second location for existing businesses in our town like the bank, which I think is a great example of not only new businesses coming to Rosemont, but expansion of current and—and founder businesses in this community. And then also the—the creativeness of these businesses to not only have a secondary bank location, but add a coffee shop and a—and a bakery to this, right? So we're seeing that kind of thing coming. It's coming maybe a little bit slower, but we're seeing good things happen because we're doing the right things first.
Al?
Yeah, a—a great question. Obviously, bringing in more—more businesses, more small businesses, more shops, more—more small food places. I think that one of the things that we should encourage—one of the things we can do to encourage businesses to move to Rosemont is maybe—maybe updating our small business opportunity capabilities that we have within the city today. Maybe that's through things like tax abatement, tax deferment, things like that, in order to encourage more small businesses. This goes dovetails and goes hand-in-hand with, you know, what is in the comprehensive plan for revitalizing the downtown. I—my aspirations, what I see in my vision would be revitalize downtown with lots of small shops and small food—food places, especially for like the folks that are—the seniors that are so close to downtown where they have to go, you know, kind of a ways in order to find things like that and not have the ability to just, say, walk or go down the street a—a block in order to go shopping for little things and—and eat things here and there. So I think we could do some things. We are encouraging businesses today, but we could do a better job of that.
Heidi?
Um, to echo a little bit about what Paul said is, we have a lot coming, and a lot of it you can see where dirt is being dug, and some you can see where we have recently just approved it. Like I mentioned before, our bank is expanding, we have new daycares that are being built and that were approved, we have restaurants that are being built, a new gas station is coming to the corner of 42 and—and Akron. The—there are multiple quadrants within our community that we're focused on, and one of the things that we did in back in 2021 is we did a visioning—visioning study with a—with a local architect team, and we took specific quadrants within our city and said, what could it look like? And we brought it to life. And we used that to meet with prospective business owners in our community so they could see our vision, and that has really triggered a lot of the development you're seeing here. We're going to do that again, and we're doing that on some key areas: 42 and Highway 3, Highway 52 and County Road 42. And then we're going to continue to expand along Highway 42 on some of those key intersections with the Rosemont Middle School being built at Biscayne and Highway 40—or County Road 42. That is an ideal location we are seeing interest in. So we are very proactive. We do have a team here at City Hall who's completely focused on economic development, and we're really now just seeing the fruits of our labor. Once the economy gets a little bit better, interest rates may come down, some of these things may be a little bit more affordable for our developers.
Thank you. And the response order for our next question will be Al Vial, followed by Heidi Freske, and then Paul Tyson. And our next question is, did you support the Meta Facebook Data Center approval? Why or why not? Al?
Uh, great question. Yeah, in—in the heat of the debate of the Meta Data Center, which I know is going to develop into an—an AI supercluster for Meta, is—I—I voiced my opinion on that and said that with the data that we had in regards to any of the studies that had been done and the AARs that had been—that had been done, which in that particular case, there was one that had gotten to a point where there was an expiration that had occurred on it. I mentioned that I could not support it. I—you know, I've really changed my tone on that. It—it's happening. It's being built. It—it—it doesn't matter at this point. I support the fact that we have that. What I would have chosen to see is an industry like Meta or several high-tech industries coming into this area in order to provide more jobs. My indications are that the Meta Data Center, outside of the actual construction, is only going to employ 49 to, say, 52 full-time employees for a $710 million project. I—I still have an issue with that because that doesn't really seem like they're really doing that much for our community.
Heidi?
I did support it. I still do support it. I am thrilled to see the construction underway. Al is correct. It did bring, I think, well over 1,000 jobs to bring it to life from now until, I believe, it's the spring of 2026. With that said, I think it's amazing that any Fortune 500 company is going to choose Rose—Minnesota, let alone Rosemont, to invest over $700 million to build a facility. That alone, I think, puts Rosemont on the map, and having a high-tech, industry-leading company invest in us is something that I'm—I'm thrilled about, and I—I just think it opens doors for us in the future. One thing to keep in mind is we did do a lot of due diligence on this. We spoke to a lot of people who have Facebook Meta Data Centers across the country, specifically in the Des Moines area, and we did not— And we did not hear one negative thing from mayors, city council people, or the residents that we spoke to. And in fact, Meta has been a huge partner with the communities to bring, bring new programs to life within their community. So I'm really excited to see them here. And I can't wait to see how we can partner to bring more opportunities to our residents.
Paul?
Yeah, so just to answer the question right away, I absolutely supported Meta. Meta is something that came on, into my understanding, kind of right when I started with city council, just kind of hearing, you know, some of the things that are going on behind the scenes. And then the process was definitely different and probably not the way everybody would have liked it to happen. But I really want to commend our staff for the due diligence, to Heidi's point, that they've done to make sure that this was the right fit. I mean, it's great that this Fortune 500 company wanted to do business in Minnesota, specifically in Rosemont. But making sure that it's right for Rosemont was something our staff spent unbelievable amount of time working on. And I learned that very, very quickly. So what I'm really excited, though, is all the different things that we're going to continue to do with them. At the ribbon cutting, we were able to meet with our community director, community partner. And their partnership is like substantial. You know, one of the things that our, one of our colleagues, Tammy Klimpel, was able to do is meet with several different mayors in the Des Moines area that have Amazon, Google, I think a couple of Facebook and maybe Microsoft data centers. And they couldn't say enough good things about, not only after they were built and the tax base that they would bring to the community, but also the community partnership, the partnership that we can have with the schools and the local businesses in the community. I'm really excited for that. So yes, I did support this, and I'm excited for what it's going to bring to this town.
Thank you, candidates. The response order for our next question will be Heidi, followed by Paul, and then Al. And our sixth question is, as Rosemont grows and becomes more diverse, how do you plan to integrate people with different backgrounds into the community?
Yep, thank you. I think it comes to our, in our strategic plan, goal number two. And I hold this up because while we're growing, it's really important that we continue to do those things. And that second goal is all about creating community connections. There's no magic bullet. One of the things we recently did, and she just started, is we added a second communication person to our staff. And the primary reason for that is we want to increase the engagement with our residents, especially those residents that are new to Rosemont, get them acclimated with us. So that was one of the proactive things that we've done. We also have a big, significant emphasis on communication. And communication is through multiple vehicles and to all audiences to make sure that they get the information they need. How can they, how can they participate in our community events? And then the last thing I'll mention is that we continue to focus on adding additional community events throughout the year. I think most people are familiar with Leprechaun Days. We have a fall food track festival. We're going to have an Oktoberfest this October. But we continue to add new events, and our ultimate goal is to have one monthly. And that's really the opportunity to bring to our entire community together. So I think our proactive nature will get there, but it all goes back to listening. If people have ideas, we'd love to hear them, that's what we're here for.
Paul?
Yeah, so as Rosemont continues to grow, we're seeing increasing diverse range of people that are choosing to make this their home, which I think is exciting. The diversity is a strength in bringing new perspectives, cultures, and ideas that enrich our community, I think are, is fantastic. So however the growth comes, the responsibility to ensure that everyone feels welcome, valued, and integrated into the fabric of Rosemont is crucial. And I think it's truly things like Heidi just referenced. It's Leprechaun Days, it's all of our fall festivals that we, that we talk about. And hopefully are doing a better job of getting that information out there, whether that's in the flyer here, whether that's social media, whether that's YouTube channel, whatever we can do to help show that we are a welcoming committee and really folk our community and really focus that, that we're promoting that inclusivity for all, for all cultures and all backgrounds. That we're focusing on community engagement. So we just, like I referenced earlier, the Night to Unite was a great opportunity for, for not only city council, but the police department, the fire department, to go into the community and really see these neighborhoods that have some older neighbors, some brand-new neighbors to Rosemont intertwining and working together and just celebrating kind of one night together. And that kind of collaboration, that kind of community, I think is important and something that we should just continue to do. And as city council members, that's one of our priorities, like Heidi mentioned, is to continue to foster that positive diversity.
Al?
Yes, I, I agree with everyone here is that, you know, number one, the city does a very good job already in providing those communication channels to those folks, making them feel welcome into the community, providing services and events that, that are inclusive of different types of people. And so we do a good job so far. I, I think really it's like, let's just keep it going, you know, times two, quite honestly, to make those folks feel valued in the community, providing that communication to those folks. You mentioned a couple of things, the Leprechaun Days, I would add in as well. I think about the, with Rack Arts, Art Blast is, we do a phenomenal job of doing ethnic-based events that are a part of that week-long celebration of the Arts Council. And I think we could even do more of that. And so I would be happy to be a part of the city council as we continue to push that forth and welcome more and more people to make our, our population more and more diverse, as it will be.
Thank you. And the response order for our next question will be Paul Tyson, followed by Al Vile, and then Heidi Freski. And our next question is, what benefits and challenges do you envision for Rosemont residents related to the development of Umore Park? Paul?
Okay, thank you for the question. I, I think I see a lot of benefits to the, just what, what's going on. And it goes back to a little bit what we referred to earlier as, as planning, really looking at that parcel, parcel of land as an opportunity to really grow and kind of do the kind of planning that we want to as a city. So whether that's new housing, amber fields, and some of the things that are going on there. But then we have this land with Umore Park where we have somebody that's really, you know, we consider ourselves a shovel-ready community. We're, we're looking for businesses. And the, one of the great things about Meta is we really are kind of on the map as a community that is looking to do business. And here we have this parcel of land where the landowner, the University of Minnesota, is really excited to, to sell this land and use this land. And what I'm most excited about it is here's a piece of land that right now is not bringing any tax revenue to the city. And with some of the planning and some of the strategic things that the city council and the staff are doing right now, we're really kind of turning something that's not generating value to generate value. And in the right way, I think, is, is one of the biggest concerns. But it's, it's very exciting to see what might happen with all that, all that land and all that possibility out there for bringing new, new companies, interesting companies. And yeah, I'm, I'm more excited than any, than I see challenges with that.
Al?
I agree with Paul. We think of this, it's a big chunk of land. We're, we're not seeing any revenue from it currently. So it makes sense, right, that as a city that we, through responsible planning, that we, we look to develop that in, you know, smart ways to enable both, as you mentioned, you know, housing, industry, business units, and some of the other aspects of what we could do with that, with that, with those parcels. And it provides a lot of value ultimately to Rosemont and what Rosemont will become as we, as we do that. It will take, you know, the challenges are, let's be smart about it. The benefits is the tax revenue, the, the, the related services and capabilities to the community that, that will bring to bear.
Heidi?
I'm aligned with the University of Minnesota's market-based approach. They pivoted to that approach back in 2015, and I think that's the most ideal. So based on what opportunities come up for a given piece of land, I am definitely open to listen. Any attempt to clean up some of the land that may be contaminated, I think is a win for our residents. Any opportunity to convert a piece of land to be a taxable parcel is also a win for our residents. So I would definitely listen. But with that said, any opportunity would have to go through and meet our requirements. And that is, that is a very diligent process because we need to make sure that we have the infrastructure in place. But from my perspective, it's a win-win if it works, if it makes sense, and it can, and can meet our standards.
Thank you. The response order for our next question will be Al Vile, followed by Heidi Freski, and then Paul Tyson. And our eighth question is, there have been several large projects, such as the metadata center and the FedEx facility approved in Rosemont. Residents are concerned about noise, use of electricity and water, aesthetics, and preserving the natural environment. How should the city go about getting feedback on these sorts of projects? And are more opportunities for feedback needed? Al?
Well, the city already does that from the perspective of the city council and with the help of staff and in order to allow the public to provide, you know, public, public commentary during, during, during city council meetings. But in my feeling, I think that, I believe that there could be more that could be done in order to get the feedback from the public, perhaps town halls on a fairly regular basis in order to capture that feedback. Some of the other avenues that are being done already is, you know, feedback can be provided through some of the web-based capabilities through the city's website. But really getting in front of the citizens and hearing what they are feeling about that and capturing that feedback, I think is extremely important. We should do that on a regular basis.
Heidi?
It's interesting because after the metadata center went through, we, we all know that there was some, there was some cautious residents out there. And we kind of did a retrospective internally to figure out, how could we do that better next time? Because there's going to be a next time, and it's going to happen quickly. And what, what we've come to the conclusion of is there are times where we can share information, and there's times where we can't. There are times where our residents may think we know more and we really don't. But I think that the ultimate conclusion is, is that we're going to continue to be more transparent. We don't want to surprise anybody. And I think one of the things that was really beneficial at the later age stages of the Meta project is we had an open house. And we had an open house that can, people from Excel Energy, the U of M, Meta, all sorts of people were there to help answer questions for people. So I think you're going to see a little bit more of that. Ironically, earlier this week at our Port Authority meeting, we were talking about another potential project. And one of the things that we brought up is, how are we going to get in front of this so our residents aren't surprised? How are we going to communicate? How are we going to provide that transparency for what we can share? Because as we've tried to communicate out previously, there are code name projects. And that's just the way Fortune 500, Fortune 500 companies do business. But we're continuing to learn. We are definitely open to opportunities, but it is a focus of ours moving forward.
Paul?
Yeah, and I think I would, I would agree with both, both comments. But, but Heidi's specific bringing out the Meta deal, I think, whether, whether we thought we did everything right or not, the perception might have been that, that, that it still wasn't enough. And so the more that we can do to help educate not only ourselves on what we can communicate right away, that we do communicate that, but also that we help communicate the public. And that's where I think we really see that, that infrastructure that we've put in with staff by hiring not only a communications director, but an assistant communications director, to be more proactive, to have more of these community meetings. One of the things I'm really proud of, the Meta deal, though, is that, to Heidi's point, we brought in the experts. So when people were talking about, oh, it's going to make all this noise, well, let's walk over here to the Excel professional that actually has that exact answer. Well, we're worried about it's, it's, it's going to be, use all of our water. Well, let's go over to the Meta expert that actually can talk about exactly how much water they're going to pull. And it's, when you really get the why or the, 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 the facts behind the source, the anxiety kind of goes down. And I think we could do more of that, which I'm excited to bring and do more of that with city council. But I'm really proud that we did the right thing. We stepped up when we could because we don't always have that, that leeway with some of these projects. But, but always more is what we're searching for, for sure, between staff and city council.
Thank you. The response order for our next question will be Heidi, followed by Paul, and then Al. And our ninth question is, as the city of Rosemont grows, how can the hometown feeling of the city be maintained? Heidi?
Well, I'm going to hand, hold up our little thing again because that's goal number three is preserving our hometown feel. And, and again, there's no magic bullet. I think hometown feel is different to everybody. I have mine, it's the Irish Stadium, it's the, you know, the grain belt on Main Street. But I think it starts with the people, and we just have to continue those community connections. We got to continue offering community events. One of the things that we talk about is just the ongoing engagement. We hired the new communications specialists. But it all starts with the neighborhoods. I think now with social media, each neighborhood has their own little community, and it's a community within a community. And we just got to continue to foster, foster and encourage that throughout our, our city.
Paul?
Yeah, so one of the things that makes Rosemont so special is that hometown feel. You hear that everywhere. It's on our, our strategic goals, it's on our planning. But it's, it's a sense of community where neighbors, neighbors know each other, local businesses thrive, and there's a shared pride in our city. And there's nothing more of a sense of that positive feeling than when you're at Leprechaun Days, where you see the local businesses being supported at the, at the, you know, at the fair or the, or the parade, where you see all the different representatives of the school activities being represented. That's what I think about when I think about the hometown feel. But, you know, with that, you know, it's, it's with all this growth that's coming. And growth is inevitable. And when managed correctly, I think it brings new opportunities and services and vibrancy to our community, which is, which is awesome. But however, it's essential that that growth happens in the way that preserves that hometown charm and that close-knit atmosphere. And that's why it's one of the top five priorities on our city council's agenda. So I'm here to believe that the best way to maintain that hometown feel is really three things. And that's continued thoughtful planning and zoning, how we're, how we're laying out what we want to do with, with some of this land out here on the east side, how we do it strategically that really fosters maintaining that hometown feel with that growth. Number two, supporting the local businesses, like we saw with First State Bank, supporting them when they want to expand, Freena, Home Depot, these businesses that are expanding, or Spectral Alloys that are expanding within the, in this market. And then three, just preserving those green spaces again in public areas, continuing to make sure our parks are maintained and kept up.
Al?
I agree with all data points here. I, I always talk about the responsible planning, and that goes, that is combined with this. We, Rosemont has so many little gems that makes this our, our town, our hometown that we are proud of. We need to do our due diligence, that responsible planning, that smart planning in order to preserve those gems that we can preserve. But to Paul's point is, growth is going to happen no matter what. But as long as we within the council and within the city administration that we are doing our due diligence to continue to identify and, and retain those little gems that, that are our hometown. I, I lived, I lived in Apple Valley before here for 15 years. Built my first house there. And I came here because it was such a hometown feel. I just loved the feel of it and all the little gems that Heidi mentioned, the, you know, flugals, the, the grain silos, the, the farms that are about, that have been here since the city was barely starting as a city. We have to preserve those things in order to keep that feel.
Thank you. And we've reached our last question. And the order for that response to this last question will be Paul, followed by Al, and then Heidi. And our last question is, how do you approach controversial or complicated issues?
Yeah, so this is, this is one that we see many times when there's dealing with an individual resident, looking for a variance on something that doesn't meet city standards or city codes. And, and I think, you know, I go back to what I mentioned earlier, that I lead with positive intent, that whole idea of we lead with empathy. And what's great about this council, and I think our staff as well, is that we have a culture that really embodies that. That whole idea of we want to do what's right, but we also want to make sure that we're, we're kind of following the zoning and the strategic planning that we've worked hard to make sure that we're proactively, you know, setting out there and setting the standard of what good looks like for the community. of what good looks like for the community. But when controversial or complicated issues come up, I think the first response is to really kind of sit back and listen. As leaders of this local community, I think it's our job to really kind of listen first, consult second, and then answer third. And I'm actually very proud of what I've been able to do for the last two years on city council, as well as work with this unbelievable staff. That's one of the things that I was most pleasantly surprised when I came on board, is this staff from administration, from the directors of each of our individual departments, to the staff at the very bottom that, you know, might be pushing a broom or mowing the lawns. We really have a great team here, and I'm excited to continue to work through these controversial problems with them.
Al?
Yeah, Paul nailed it. I think with me as well, is number one is listen, right? If you don't listen to what the issues are, you don't know what those issues are. And you have to listen, really, to both sides of it. And there will be a city side of it, and there will be a resident side of it, depending upon what that issue is. You have to be able to empathize with what that issue is, and then you have to be able to communicate. I think communication is utmost. And then, the, you know, the answer thing. We have to, from a city perspective, we would have to take into account, you know, rules and regulations that may be a part of this particular issue, controversial, complicated or not. And then we have to decide from there, but taking all those avenues into account and providing that two-way communication in order to understand why we came to the decision that we came to.
Heidi?
For the controversial one, I think I would echo what these guys said, is the first thing you need to do is listen. You really need to understand all the different perspectives that are coming at you. And then we need to discuss the matter, and kind of like talk through each of those perspectives, and how does it impact our Rosemont residents? And then, come to a conclusion. And once that's done, when we meet back with the, you know, response of the parties, is explain the why. That communication is really important. Explain our perspective. I think that's really helpful. When it comes to complicated issues, this could be a little bit different. And I think a lot of times what we have to do with complicated issues is break it down into its different components, whatever they may be, and explain it. Because many times, what we may view as pretty straightforward, they can be complicated to a resident. So breaking it down into consumable parts, explaining it. If there's something we're trying to figure out, I'm very data-driven, what does the data tell us? That also helps us deal with some complicated issues. And then it comes back down to consulting again, and explaining the why, the why on the matter.
Thank you, candidates. And this brings us to closing statements. You'll have two minutes for your closing statement, and the response order will be Al Vile, followed by Paul Tyson, and then Heidi Freski. Al?
Thank you, Lynn. First, I'd like to thank the Dakota County Regional Chamber of Commerce, along with, and very importantly, Lynn and Tina, Tina's out there, from the League of Women Voters, for putting this event on tonight. Thank you very much. Your vote matters. That's why it's important for everyone to get out and vote on September 20th, when early voting starts, and also on, my favorite, November 5th, when in-person voting happens. We have both exciting and difficult times coming to Rosemont in the years ahead, and it makes sense to have a balanced and skilled city council working as a team that can take on current and future issues with the public in mind at all times, and revel in the success that will be Rosemont now and in the future. We have 74 days. I humbly ask for your support and your vote for me, Al Vile, to be elected as a member of the Rosemont City Council. Head over to alvileforrosemount.com for updated information on our campaign, and remember, we are Rosemont, we embody the spirit of pride and progress. Thank you.
Paul?
Well, I'd like to also thank the League of Women Voters for putting this event together and for your thoughtful questions. I would also like to thank my fellow colleagues up here tonight, to take the time and energy to help serve in this community, I think is noble, and I appreciate it very much. But now, I kind of focus to the residents of Rosemont. And, you know, I really, Rosemont is more than just a city to us. It's a community where we all live, work, and raise our families. I'm proud to call this place home, and I believe in its potential for even greater things in the future. My vision for Rosemont centers around positive growth, enhancing that small-town feel like you heard tonight, and ensuring our parks and trails are not only maintained, but expanded. These spaces are where we connect, where we build relationships, and it's where we find the true spirit of our community. So both growth and development aren't enough on their own. We need to continue fostering strong relationships between the council, working with dedicated city staff, and more importantly, each of you, the residents of Rosemont. Together, we can create a future that honors the past while embracing the possibilities ahead of us. I bring to this council positive energy, a commitment to listening, and a determination to work hard for the people of Rosemont. I really like this quote from Warren Buffett, what he said is, "Someone's sitting in the shade today because someone planted a tree a long time ago." So if elected, I can ensure that we will continue to plant those trees, both literally and figuratively, so that Rosemont can thrive for generations to come. Thank you for your time, and I humbly ask for your vote.
Heidi?
Thank you again for hosting tonight's forum, and to the Rosemont residents for taking time to learn more about us. My vision for Rosemont is the same as it was eight years ago, provide residents with a high quality of life, with the desired amenities, commercial options, and a safe environment. Preserving our hometown feel is not just words, it's how I make decisions. Community is always first. Continued strategic growth. I am pro-business and believe we have tremendous assets in both land and people. But with growth, we need to think through the impacts and ensure our plans for infrastructure are in place. Roads, intersections, public safety in all forms, water and power resources. And finally, public safety is always the top priority, as we continue to make investments in both police and fire with buildings, equipment, staffing, technology, and continued education, ensuring we have safe water, and our continued focus on our roadways and intersections. I am proud of the Rosemont brand we have created. Our focus on transparency, increased communications, and ongoing engagement is a priority. In a recent survey, 96% of Rosemont residents said Rosemont was an excellent or good place to live. Those results prove that our decisions and our future goals are on track. I hope you'll give me, oh, I don't mean to get emotional, give me the honor of serving for more years. You can learn more by checking out Facebook and Instagram, and I have a website page, freskiferosemount.com. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. The League of Women Voters Dakota County and the Dakota County Regional Chamber of Commerce would like to thank everyone for participating in our forum. Would especially like to thank the candidates for being part of the democratic process by running for office and being willing to serve their community. The League of Women Voters also researches issues important to our members and to the health of our communities. If you're interested in finding out more about what we do and how you can make a difference, please visit us at lvdodacotacounty.org. You can find out more information about voting and candidates at vote411.org. Again, thanks for viewing, and remember to vote by November 5th.